That was very weird. Besides insulting you, Kabir, I think he had a message for me, too.
I didn't, I didn't, I heard in one racial slur, I didn't hear the whole.
Oh, the other wasn't the racial slur. It was just a nasty comment to me. I don't know why they picked me.
I didn't, I have only been zoomed on once before, and that was equally, if not more troubling, where they zoom on all this pornography. It was like, you know, like 100 people all over the world. It was horrible.
You know, we had it once when I was going to Shul, you know, synagogue, and, and they came on with all this anti-Semitic stuff. It was pretty scary. But they turned it, they turned it off right away.
Don't take it personally, anybody. It's not.
Not at all, not at all.
They're probably from another country, in another country.
You'd hope, you'd hope.
Be like Virginia?
Just like you get your.
You're being recorded.
Wait, what about when you get all those things that you're stranded, you're, you're, someone writes that I'm stranded in, in China. I'd send money to this address.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, I've made it so that I will, I, I have to admit people out of the waiting room until I look into it and figure out what, what the, what the best solution is to avoid that from happening in the future.
Thank you, ma'am.
Along that line, I, I think that people that come on, our neighbors included, should have to have a name, not a letter, not a first name. Because our Shul, after this happened to us, nobody gets in without their name. And that they get let in too, but I mean, if you don't have a real name, you're not in.
Yeah.
I agree with that. That's a good.
We're gonna, okay, we.
And maybe on video would be ideal.
We're gonna talk, we were, we talked about that a little bit at a work session, and we'll talk, we'll put it on the agenda this month, too.
Thank you.
Bear with me one second. I just need to send Ron the new link.
Does Steve have it? He's not here yet.
Let me just make sure Steve has it as well.
Yeah, we don't have Steve either. Sorry, speaking. I thought that was another Zoom bomb.
Yeah, exactly. I was like, I'm here, and then I was scanning the screen.
Every now and then, my watch just talks to me. It like, it listens to me, and then it says something ridiculous. I need my children to help me through this. I need my children to get the breathing thing off this watch. It tells me to breathe.
Yes, that, that, that thing. So I'm driving, and it tells me to breathe, and I go, I don't think so.
Yeah, I need one of my children to come home and help me.
Right.
Yeah, I, I think there is a way to require, require, at the very least, like a regi, like that you have to register in, in order to be admitted as well ahead of time, so.
That's what we did at Shul.
We'll figure it out.
Yeah.
So.
There's Ron looking very official. There he is. We had your official picture, Ron.
So I'm going to recall the meeting to order, and I will ask the town manager to read the disclaimer again, please.
Yes, so this meeting is also being recorded, so we will post the recording for consumption at a later date. If we happen to get interrupted again, we will regroup and make sure that we have a new link available to conduct our meeting peacefully and respectfully. If you have a question or comment for me, you can feel free to use the chat function. It's set up right now that you can chat with the host, myself. Chat for the whole, for the whole group is disabled. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I will turn it back to you.
Okay, thank you. Well, where we were is I was discussing the introduction of this resolution establishing a revenue committee. And I think we, the, there was agreement that Councilor Kumar will write an article for the journal. And what I was trying to say is that I will be working closely with him to, because I assume that he most likely will be the liaison to the committee. So I will be working closely with him to identify members of the committee so that when the, the resolution is approved, hopefully next month, that at the same time, the members can be approved. And that, that works, doesn't it, Mr. Town Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So we will, we will move forward, and hopefully by next month, a month from now, that committee will get going. The next item is a motion to introduce ordinance number 10214, an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances to prohibit the use of gas power blowers on or after September 1st, 2022, as recommended by the Town Environment Committee, Mr. Town Manager.
Yes, just to briefly say that this is an ordinance that is essentially already on the books verbatim, but beginning January 1st, 2023. And so this, this change to the code of ordinances would bump up the, the date that it would be effective to September 1st, 2022, to, to try and capture that fall leaf drop season under these new rules, essentially. I don't know if maybe Councilmember Barr or Council President Circo had anything to add, add to that.
I can say that the pandemic has led to, was so many of us working from home and being at home during the day. And it has made crystal clear, not only the noise of these blowers, but the fumes from them. And so that is part of the reason for bringing this forward to September of 2022, as we are all in the future going to be working more from home.
Do, Mr. President, did you, did you want to say anything?
Well, yeah, thank you for your question, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Robin. First off, I'd like to note that, that the council's not had an opportunity really to discuss this in detail in a work session. So that'll be on the agenda for this month of October. And, but I gather from informal discussions that we might not have consensus on this, and, and that's okay. We, we can discuss it and, and move forward. I would like to add to Robin's comments that, so one of the questions, what has changed from when the council passed this a while ago? I would argue strongly that what has changed is climate change. And the town of Somerset has formally signed on to declarations of a climate emergency. And this is something that the town can do constructively to try to address climate change. So I'm in favor of it. I'm excited to move this ordinance forward, but I also look forward to discussing it with my colleagues in this month.
Okay, thank you. So before I take questions from others, I, I, I wanted to review the procedure here. So at the work session, at the end of the work session, there was discussion about changing the date, but there was no consensus. And, and the, because what might have happened is that three of you would have agreed to amendment to the, to the code, changing the date, but that did not take place. In the meantime, two council members requested to put this introduction on the agenda. So that's why it's on the agenda. But there, for an introduction, but as the council president pointed out, this wasn't thoroughly discussed in a work session, and it will be done. So it's sort of like we're doing it a little bit backwards, but it's fine because it still works. And if, and if it's introduced tonight, and then if the council decides that it needs more time for public comment, it can be reintroduced again in November. But I would urge you to, to approve the introduction this month. But in any case, so Councilmember Barr, do you have any further questions about the introduction?
I have no further questions about the introduction.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Haller?
No, I, I don't.
Thank you. Councilmember Kumar?
I just wanted to, I support it, and I wanted to note that the Environmental Committee actually recommended moving the deadline. This is in the minutes that are publicly available, moving the deadline up to Jan. 1, 2022. And I think, I think it was Councilmember Barr who recommended that, that there should be sort of a more reasonable timeline. It was moved later in the year. I also share the view that this is perhaps impactful on multiple levels. And I think definitely noise and nuisance are an aspect of this, so fully supportive.
Thank you. Councilor Rovak? Did you have any questions?
Um, I guess my question is just that, you know, if we, as a town council, that was obviously the council before us decided upon this date, and it was written into the decision that we would be doing it on this date, you know, can everything then just be changed and move forward to change that date?
That.
I mean, is that legal?
Let's get the town attorney to answer that.
Yes, so the council can always revisit legislation and make amendments to the code as the current council deems appropriate.
Okay, then I have no other questions.
Okay, thank you. Council, are you, are you prepared to make a motion to introduce this ordinance?
I'll make the motion to amend the already established ordinance to prohibit the use of gas power blowers to advance the date of the prohibition to September the 1st, 2022.
What, what you're making, the motion is to introduce.
Yes, it's to introduce.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second? I see Circo. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all the. Go ahead.
Hello, um, I.
I think Councilmember Haller first, and Councilwoman Rovak. Is there discussion about this?
Yes. So we are just voting, not on our opinions about it, but just to reintroduce it. Is that it?
Voting to introduce an ordinance that would amend it, and then there'll be ample time for discussion about it.
No further.
Public comment.
I'm good.
Councilor Rovak, did you have a question?
That was my same question.
Yeah, so you're not, you're not voting now to change the date. You're voting to introduce an amendment to the ordinance which would change the date. And then Councilmember, go ahead.
So, um, so if we introduce that, that amendment to change the date, and we then agree right now that we're going to introduce that, and then we're going to discuss it in a work session, can we still change the date further from that, or would that date stay at December 1st?
Yes.
Okay.
This just starts, this just, basically what this does is start the, it gets the discussion going. And there will be, there will be, the council president has announced it will be on the work session. There will be, if you decide to put it on the agenda for November, of course, there will be a public hearing. So the public can comment one way or the other on it. So you have lots of options. Tonight, it's just to begin the formal discussion. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. I know what I'm voting on now. Thanks.
Okay, great. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? All this, I think all five of you voted. Thank you. And so now we want to, again, Mr. President, would you like to assign the writing of the, the journal article?
Didn't I write that one already?
I think so.
Yeah.
I think so.
Well, but it, but it needs to be publicized again.
Well, I said, actually, I think I said we're voting on it in November.
It could just be one, it could, right, but that.
I'll, I'll take it on. I'll take it on.
It could just be one paragraph. It doesn't have to be anything formal, and you can make reference to that excellent article of Councilmember Barr.
I'll take it on. Thank you.
Okay, thank, okay, great. Okay, thank you. The next item is public hearing motion to approve of an extension of the pool season to November 28th, 2021, currently set to expire October 31st, 2021. And it costs between $9,142.48 to $17,368.72, as recommended by the Town Pool Committee, Mr. Town Manager.
Yes, I, I hope you all were able to see the, the write-up that I did on this issue. The, the pool committee met this past Thursday and voted to approve the extension of the pool season through November 2021. The pool, as a reminder, is scheduled right now to be open through October, per council approval at the September meeting. Regularly, the pool is open from right before Memorial Day weekend through the month of September. So we've extended it one month this year, as we did last year. So American Pool proposed, excuse me, American Pool provided us with a proposal that included three options for remaining open in the month of November. So option one would essentially maintain existing pool hours through the month of November. And that's the highest cost at $17,368.72. Option two reduces pool hours so they only open after school lets out on weekdays. So it opens at four o'clock. That costs $13,441.12. And then option three only has the pool open on weekends. So that, that one is the lowest at $9,142.48. They provided three options, but as I said, American Pool cautioned that if we went with option three, they couldn't guarantee staffing because it would be such sporadic and a low amount of shifts that we would lose, for example, the, the, the pool, the lifeguard manager that we have now, Helen. And the majority, if not all of the lifeguards, basically said, not enough hours for me. So they, they wouldn't continue on with us. I provided some information about pool usage through, throughout this year, and some information on, on, on money related to utility costs and other things that, that Councilmember Kumar also touched on in an earlier email to the council. So essentially, the option one, if, if the council were to pursue that, I've estimated it would require about $28,000 in total to be reallocated to total pool costs. Option two would be about $24,000. And I didn't even bother with option three because I, I just frankly don't think it's a, a very good or realistic option at that point. If they can't even guarantee that we would have hours. So I would, I would foresee an instance where we're only open on weekends, and then we're having to close on weekends if they can't round up enough lifeguards. I'm happy to go over in more detail some of the numbers that I, I shared with you. I also made note that the council could consider additional fees to recoup some of the costs of remaining open. I, I basically said, yeah, assuming similar trends as last year, when the pool usage about halved from September to October. And then it stays, assuming those October numbers stay pretty steady in November because ostensibly those would be kind of the hardcore pool users. The town would need to charge a user fee of about $280 per household to be revenue neutral for option one, and $240 per household for option two. Again, those numbers assume no drop in users as a result of new fees as well. Some people might decide to heck with this. I'm not, I'm not paying to use the pool. So I tried to lay out, you know, as the three options for you, some, some things that have been discussed about trying to remain revenue neutral. And with that, I, I know that we have the pool committee chair here as well.
That's, that's, I have him present.
So maybe.
Are you done, Mr. Town Manager?
Yeah, that, that, that basically summarizes what, what I had for you. As I said, I'm happy to, happy to discuss any of the things that I, that I gave to you.
I think that'll come out in the questions from the council. Okay, Mr. Chair, thank you for joining us tonight. Would you like to add anything to the town manager's presentation?
I, just a couple of things. First, Matt Zaff, Dorset Avenue Pool Committee Chair. First, big thanks to Matt for getting the information and Kabir for going through a lot of the costs. I, I agree 100% with Matt in regards to, I wouldn't even consider option three. As far as option one versus option two, I can tell you from anecdotal evidence, not personal, but from other residents, as well as talking to Helen, the pool manager, there does not seem to be a lot of pool usage between the one and four o'clock hour. It does seem to pick up a decent amount after the four o'clock hour, according to Helen. And that's, that is my own personal observation, having swam laps a lot of days around like the five o'clock hour, that it does seem to pick up then. So I personally, from a fiscal conservative standpoint, would be more in favor, honestly, of option two than option one. I would also add in regards to the user fee, that when we did conduct the pool survey of the town, we had 141 responses, and 81 people said that they would be in favor of paying a fee to keep the pool open past October 31st. Now, I don't know what that fee dollar amount would be that they'd be willing to pay, but I do want to add that there was at least 81 people of the 141 that responded that said that they would pay a fee.
Okay, thank you. Council President Circo, do you have any questions?
Yes, please. I'm, I'm looking, I'm trying to understand usage, resident interests, and the cost. So just, just to clarify, the cost we heard at the opening when this was introduced, refer to the American Pool Company costs. Is that correct, Matt? Not the total costs?
Yeah, that's, that's right. Yeah.
So if we were to proceed with the pool committee chair's recommendation of option two, it's not $13,441. We're really looking at a, somewhere around $24,105. Is, is that correct?
Yeah, that's, that's right. In order, basically to, to, I mean, the, the, the main cost there is, of course, the pool management. But then we'd also, we'd also have to pay to, to keep the lights on at the pool, the, the pool heating. We would have to extend our security contract there. And, and then our water and sewer bill would, you know, would, would stay consistent with what it is when the pool's open as opposed to when it's closed, when it virtually goes down to zero.
Okay, just in terms of costs, I just did a quick calculation. If we assume that the 81 residents who replied in the affirmative to the, the pool survey were willing to pay for, to cover the costs, so it's revenue neutral for the town, it would be $298 per person for those 81 people. So I just, I can offer slightly larger number than was listed there. And I guess, do we have any history of the pool being open in November? I, I don't recall it ever being opened, not like.
Not, not to my knowledge.
Not to my knowledge either.
Okay. Um, we, we've considered, and the council has considered and approved other extensions to the pool's season, starting earlier and extending later as a way of helping residents deal with COVID-19. But I haven't heard that as part of the rationale for this. What, what is the, the impetus for this? Is it just people want to swim?
Oh, no, no, that, it is 100% COVID-related. Like, that was, that was the impetus for it even to be considered in the first place.
Okay.
You know, to that extent of not just people to swim. You know, like, for example, one resident I know, he goes to the pool almost every day just to be outside and read a book. And it's just, you know, it's an environment he enjoys being at, and it's just a place he knows he can go and have a lounge chair and relax. And it's a nice place to be outside and read a book. So, yeah, no, this is entirely about providing another outdoor safe space for residents to be able to gather. Including, like, I'll give you an example, another resident is having her son's birthday party at the pool this month. You know, and, and that's, you know, again, a, a safe outdoor space for, you know, the kids to be able to have a party. And, you know, that doesn't exist in a lot of other capacities at this point, so.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Barr, do you have any questions?
I guess I do. I guess the initial question is, do we know how many of the families in town have membership in pools that have basically a closed pool so that their winter use is appropriate? Matt, do you have any sense of that?
I honestly don't know of anyone who has membership elsewhere, period.
Oh, that's not true.
But Debbie, Debbie.
Didn't even know.
I think several.
No, wait a minute. You'll get a chance. This is the opportunity for Councilmember.
Personally, I don't know of anyone that does. I, I do know there's, there's like swim programs that you can pay for at, like, for example, Sea Devils, Tulsa and CAP ASA. But as far as adults, I think only Tulsa offers an adult program, maybe Sea Devils does. As far as a master's program, there's L4 as well. But as far as like, like, membership at a, a pool that's closed, I, I personally don't have any knowledge.
What, what is your, how do you anticipate that we'll use the pool during November? I mean, the guy reading the book on the outside, is he going to do that in November?
So, you know, I, I went back and I looked at temperatures, and this was part of also my decision in like, you know, whether or not I prefer one to, one to close or four to close. And I looked as best I could over the last few years. And, you know, this is, I, I say, anyone who tries to tell me climate change isn't real needs to look at the temperatures over the last few years in the month of November around here. And I would say, you know, by the, the mid to late afternoon, there are more days in November that it was 65 or above than there were below. And to me, that's the line in the sand as far as when I'm hanging out outside. And certainly when the kids will be in the pool, it seems. But, so I, I would say yes to your question. I also think that there'll just be more people that, you know, will want to, you know, whether or not they're still, they're wearing a sweatshirt and sweatpants while they're doing it. It's just a place to congregate and, and be together. And I'll also say, like, you know, this is part of my reasoning behind not recommending extending early bird swim because the early morning hours, I think, will just be too. Because the early morning hours, I think will just be too cold. Um, and I, and I don't think it, it's functional, even though the early bird swim pays for itself. That, um, you know, we would, the, the numbers would just drop. I think it would honestly be too cold that early on, but by the late afternoon and I'm, you know, I think it, it's beautiful.
Yeah, there are short days in November too, so you know, the evenings draw in rather early as well. Um, but all right, okay, I'll leave it at that and go on.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Heller. You have the floor.
I, i- in terms of the joining other pools, I, I can rattle off three people I know offhand. That belong to the YMCA and Matt, you know, all of those people. One of those people lives in my house and, and I belong there too. Um, I think you'd be surprised at how many people in the neighborhood actually do belong to the YMCA. Because it's, um, it's a best buy and, um, it does a lot of things for not only adults but kids as well. So put that aside. My concern about keeping the pool open is that. So we open it late in the afternoon, which sounds like the, it sounds like the kids are coming late in the afternoon right now. Late in the afternoon, it's gonna start getting dark. I don't think they're gonna come in the dark. I don't think the guy who I know who you're talking about, who likes to come and lounge at the pool and take it and enjoy it is coming in the dark either to read. At four o'clock, he's already, he's probably not gonna come. Um, I, I just, I, I don't think it's prudent for us to open this pool in November, late in the afternoon. I just, I think, yeah, we could have a warm month if we're lucky. But more than likely, I don't think we're gonna be so lucky. And I don't know if it's fiscally responsible for us to do this. So that's just where I'm gonna weigh in. And one other question, one other, sorry.
Go for it.
If let's say we decide to keep this pool open for people that have to pay, okay? And they, so they have to meet the cost of this. Do we not keep it open if we can't get enough people to do it? It sounds like we need, you know, just under a few pennies, under three hundred dollars. So if we can't get the, what is it, eighty some odd people, I don't know how you did the math, Steve, math isn't my long suit. Never trust my math. Um, you know, uh, let's say we needed eighty people. So do we not keep it open if we can't get eighty people? Just in other words, do they have to sign up, agree, pay? And then we do, and then we sign the contract with American pools. That's my question.
So is that a question to the, to the, remember, this is your opportunity to ask questions.
Okay, that's my, that's my question.
Town manager or to the, or to the, um.
I guess it's to Matt, because he's putting himself on the line to do this. And I guess it's my question to, I mean, Matt Zaffed. Um, I guess it's my question to, I don't know, Steve.
Well, you'll be able to discuss it after all of the.
Okay.
Questions in the public testimony, then you'll be able to.
Okay, I'll let that go.
So, so now, do you have any questions of the chair or of the town manager?
I'm done, sorry.
To answer your, your question, Debbie, I, you know, one, I know I would pay it, but I honestly don't think. That there's eighty people that if you presented them with a three hundred dollar fee, I don't know if that many people would pay. Um, I honestly will say that, you know, as much as I would love to be able to have the pool open in November. And as much as I would pay that three hundred dollar fee, honestly, I'd pay a five hundred dollar fee if I could. Um, you know, I'm, I, I would not say this is a hill I would die on, you know, to use that cliche. I think it would be absolutely wonderful and an incredible benefit to the residents, um, especially the kids to have the pool open. Um, you know, and, and that being said, I am also, you know, a fiscal conservative by profession and by nature. And so, you know, I, I fully agree with you that I don't think it is the fiscal right choice. Um, that being said, you know, I, I often tell my clients, there's making money and then there's everything else. And when we're making investments decisions, I say, as much as I would rather make you an extra penny on this investment. I need you to be able to sleep at night. Now, it's not the same thing here, but I say there's, there's been, you know, saving money and then there's everything else. And, you know, sometimes everything else has to win. But as I said before, again, this is not a hill I would die on. Um, I think it would be absolutely wonderful for the pool to be open in November. I will totally understand if it's not.
Okay, thank you. Is that, does that answer all your questions, Councilmember Heller? Okay, thank you. Councilmember Kumar.
Thank you, Mayor Slavin. I have a question for Chairman Zaff. This is, uh, there is a proposal from the pool committee. To extend the pool season through the end, uh, end of November through, through Thanksgiving. Was this a unanimously approved proposal from the pool committee?
Yes.
Okay, because I, 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 we often end up in these discussions talking to you. But this was a unanimously approved proposal from the pool committee. Was it, uh, was there a specific recommendation from the pool committee?
No, of the options. At the time, uh, so this is the thing is at the time, we were not aware. About American pools not being able to staff with, with option three. Um, in fact, where, at the discussion, the majority were in favor of actually sort of a hybrid option. Of option three of the weekends. But then on November fourth and the entire week of Thanksgiving, going back to full hours. I basically treating them like a Saturday and Sunday, because November fourth, there's no school and.
There was no specific option voted on by the pool committee, okay? And you had Corum and the pool, you had Corum and the pool committee when this vote was taken.
Yes.
Thanks. And Matt, uh, Trolinger, the option two is twenty-four thousand one hundred and five. Um, and you say that number would potentially come in slightly under budget, depending on how less often electricity is used at the pool. I'm trying to understand, you know, just from a budget perspective, what are you proposing really? And, and let's, so, uh, and I'll just double click on that question. If you say option two, are you saying we will move, we will have to move money from somewhere else for that twenty-four thousand? What are you, what is the exact proposal from your end?
Uh, yeah.
Especially on option two.
Yeah, um, so. Uh, uh, in option two, I was using the same numbers for all of those utilities. As I was for the pool being open full hours. And so that's why I added that caveat that was. More, more than likely, it'll come in under that because we can, we can leave the lights off.
So roughly twenty-four thousand dollars and, but the, what are you saying? We will, is this something, can, is this, it's not budgeted. We didn't budget for November, right? So we will have to allocate money from somewhere else. Is that, is that true? And can we allocate money from somewhere else? Did you look at that?
Yes.
Looking, okay.
Yeah.
What would we allocate money from, from the town manager's perspective?
Yeah, yeah, it's, uh, so I, in, uh, my first draft that I, I had a couple of options in there. And then took them out because, um.
You're not sure.
I didn't want to, I didn't want to. You know, be too much of the invisible hand guiding, guiding conversation. Um, and also.
I see, okay.
So essentially, the two options, uh, if, if, if we're not picking, you know, a thousand dollars here, a thousand dollars here. Trying to, trying to accumulate it. The two options of monies that are large enough pools that we could move the money from. Would be. Snow removal and hope that the, the winter is an easy one and, or, uh. Uh, amend the budget if we get hit with a big snowstorm.
I li- I like where this is going. We'll be out at the pool in the cold, reading a book while the roads are not snow.
Right. Option two, which is probably the more, more responsible one.
Yeah.
Uh, is that we do, we always have a line item for operating budget contingency.
That's what I was hoping you would say, Matt. I didn't want to, but I, I, I'm assuming every budget has a contingency and so I'm wondering.
Yeah, yeah, so what we've, what we've tried to do in our budget historically. And Robin can, can attest to this and, and maybe even speak on it a little bit more. We try to, we try to be as exact as we can in the different line items. But knowing that there might be a cost here or there that runs a little bit more. And we just have one line item to essentially cover any overrun of cost for budget contingency. And so we could use, we, we have fifty thousand dollars put, put into that every year. And so we could use that money for this.
And we haven't used the contingency up to this point in the fiscal year.
Uh, that's right.
Okay, uh, and, and last.
And, and then, I'm sorry, uh, just quickly, and then the, the other option is to just amend the budget. And add more money to this line item and not take it from anywhere and just amend the budget and add, add more money.
Okay, last question. I, I personally have similar views in terms of it's gonna be colder and, you know. Um, and, and, you know, I don't know how, how many outdoor activities there would be. But I want to understand how we are charac- I mean, maybe Matt Zaff, you can answer. How are we characterizing the demand, given that the pool committee unanimously approved this? Like what was, you know, how did the pool committee, not you, the committee view demand? For, for the service. I, I, and I know these are questions, so I, I hopefully we will have discussion because I have a view. Which I like to share during discussion, but I just want to understand, how do we see demand? We all have our views, cold, hot, short days, whatever. But what was your assessment of demand that led to unanimous vote in the pool committee?
Um, well, so I, I will say, one of the things we caveated demand on was having the, the numbers from the member splash. Uh, which we didn't have. Um, but, you know, and that we would said, you know, that would be something we would want to look at in regards to what the actual demand had been. Um, but, but the, otherwise it was more about, you know, that there is some. We don't know how much it is, honestly, you know, and, but we think if there is some, and if this is something the town can do. That it's a great thing and, and should be done.
Great, thank you. I'm done, uh, Mayor Slavin.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Rovak, do you have any questions?
Um, so I was just confused about, um, the option of the weekends versus the four P M on plus weekends. So are they saying that they would be able to staff that from four P M on plus weekends?
Yes, so they, they are absolutely committed to being able to staff four P M to close. Which is basically four P M to eight P M Monday through Thursday, four P M to nine P M on Friday. And then weekends would stay the same as ten A M to nine P M on Saturday and ten A M to eight P M on Sunday. Um, that is no problem whatsoever. It's just if we got rid of that Monday through Friday. Then there's not enough total hours for the guards and they would seek employment elsewhere is really the.
Got it. Okay, yeah, I mean, I think that the weekends, I mean, are definitely an interesting opportunity. My only concern is that, you know, on the weekdays, it's daylight savings, so it'll be dark at five o'clock. I mean, so, um, you know, and I'm from Minnesota, it just seems a little chilly. So, uh, that's all my questions. Thanks.
Thank you. And now we will turn to public comments. Mr. Town Manager, has any resident or guest indicated they wish to?
I assume it's right, do we hear from, uh, Representative, Councilmember Heller?
Yes, she's, she has.
Okay, I just want to make sure, thank you, sorry.
Oh, yeah, she, she would have spoken up if I had passed her over. Okay, Mr. Town Manager, has any resident or guest?
We have, we have a couple of, uh, residents who wish to ask a question or make a comment. The first is, uh, Maya Hyman.
Welcome. Remember to state your name and your street for the record.
Maya Hyman, Ballstone. I just wanted to briefly say three things. Number one, I have two kids, a, um, seven-year-old. Sorry, he's nine, a nine-year-old and a ten-year-old. Um, it's been a long day, um, and both of them cannot be vaccinated yet. The pool this year has been the saving grace for them. Just this afternoon, we were there, um, enjoying it. And there was a whole host of kids playing in the pool, splashing, enjoying themselves. Plus there were people doing laps and there was lessons happening. And it was one of those moments where I just was thrilled that I live in Somerset. And I cannot under, understate how, um, forgotten families of those who cannot be vaccinated yet feel. And I know that it seems crazy to want to have the pool open in November. And normally, I wouldn't even want the pool open in November, but I can't do playdates inside. I can't belong to the Y because my kids aren't vaccinated yet. I can't take them there, you know, knowingly that they're gonna be in. In indoor environments without vaccination and that protection. And I don't know when they're gonna be vaccinated. And, you know, we, we think, oh, it's no big deal. But the ability to have kids socialize in a safe place. Because there's lifeguards and because there's other kids and they have somewhere to go, because we live in this town. Just this year will make a huge difference. Um, and I just want to make sure that the voice of those kids and those families who cannot be vaccinated. Forget about a booster shot, cannot be vaccinated yet, is heard. And I'm not gonna ask for November next year. It's about November this year. And, um, you know, I don't, I don't know about bringing them there at seven o'clock at night. I don't know if there's any way of saying, you know, like, three to seven instead. Because, um, one of the council members talked about it getting dark. Um, but I just think those hours after school, even if we're just talking four, five, six, those three hours plus weekends. If there's any way we can keep our heated pool open, it will make a huge difference to families like mine. Thank you for considering.
Thank you very much. Uh, who's next, Matt?
Uh, the next, um, was somebody who just sent me a message and asked me to present. Um, an option for the council to consider to not staff the pool. But to leave the pool patio area open through November, so people can still gather there for. Eating outdoors or, um. Uh, reading books or what have you.
Well, do you want to, do you want to respond about that?
Well, my, 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 my only. I, I haven't, I didn't think of that myself, to be perfectly honest, so I haven't looked into it. I don't know what the liability would be to have the pool open there and to allow people in there without, without a lifeguard.
Why don't we ask the town attorney?
Sorry, could you repeat the question?
Is that an option? Oh, yeah.
So, 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 somebody had, uh, presented an option to consider that we. We don't pay to staff the pool essentially. But in recognition that, um, it's nice to have a, a public meeting space outside. That we, um, allow the pool to stay open, the patio area for people to gather. There and eat food there and gather, congregate, what have you, read books. Um. I, I, I hadn't really thought of it myself. Um, I don't know if there's some liability to the town. Or, or any rules relating to, um, you know, having an open pool area unsupervised. Um, I guess those, the, that was, that would be my main concern that sort of jumped out.
Okay, Matt, I can actually answer that.
Hold on a second. Let's let the tenant attorney answer, then you can respond.
Yeah, I'd have the same concerns, Matt, you know, unless we could prevent congregation around the pool area. Which I, you know, I don't think is reasonably practical, then I, I think it would create. A safety hazard, having folks there without any, any staff to keep people out of the water.
Okay, now, Mr. Chairman, did you want to answer that?
Yeah, it, um, Montgomery County would not allow it. It's, um, it's, you have to have a pool operator. Uh, someone who has pool operator license on site in order to have anyone, in order for the pool to basically be open. And that amazingly includes with or without water.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Town Manager, who's next?
Um, Lucy Freeman.
Yes, it's Lucy Freeman on Ballstone Avenue. And I had a couple of questions. I wondered last year in October, how many individuals went swimming through October? I don't, I'm not asking how many total swims. I'm asking how many people have, how many individuals went swimming? And, you know, I just want to know the number of people who swim. And so far.
Lucy, let's, let's get that answered first.
Yes, uh, let's see, so. I. I believe I looked at that number, I
Does the chair know the answer?
Okay, so, um, you're asking for last September, Lucy?
Last, last year, October.
Or last year, October?
Tober.
Oh, okay, I don't, I don't know that I wrote that down, I can, I can try to get you an answer, it'll just take me probably three minutes to get it, so I don't know.
Okay, why don't you try to get it, why don't you try to get it, and next question?
So my next question is, starting now in October, how many swimmers have we had in October? And then I was gonna say that water aerobics, we are stopping on Friday, October twenty ninth. Uh, I just felt that our numbers will go down, and it's not fiscally responsible to keep going in November, but last year in October, we met three times a week, and that counted for maybe fifteen, eighteen, twenty-two, whatever, of the number of swims that occurred during October. And I wondered what the projection is for how many individuals will go swimming in November.
Okay, so.
So, it's, I, I mean, it's only Octo- I, I, I do have the information for September, um, you know, Friday was October first, so I haven't had an opportunity to look at October of, of, of this year. Um, I will say that from September to October of last year, it's about the, the number of guests about halved, so we went from about a hundred and ninety-eight guests per day to, uh, to a hundred. Um, so, I'm assuming that will more or less stay steady through October, it's hard for me to really know, um, how to project November, because on the one hand, you might think it'll continue to go down, on the other hand, it could be, these are the people that love the pool, and, you know, you, you've already kind of narrowed the, 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 the access to those who really truly love the pool and are gonna go, rain or shine, night or day, doesn't matter if the pool's open, those people are gonna go. Um, so I was, I was sort of operating closer to the assumption of the latter, that those people are, are, are the diehards that are, that are gonna be there, and so we wouldn't see a huge drop off from October to November, but again, without any historical precedent, it's, it's really hard to make that call.
Uh, okay, let me, let, let's ask the chair if he would like to, um, respond to that. Mr. Chairman, do you? I, I, um, I think Matt's correct in his assessment, um, the only other thing is I would, I would venture to say that, you know, now, this year probably would be maybe even a little bit higher than last year, as far as numbers, only because the number of both vaccinated people is obviously much higher, um, so people might feel a little more comfortable doing it, and then vice versa, really to Maya's point, when you don't have a lot of other options for the unvaccinated youth, you know, if you've only got one place that you can do it, it might draw even more people, so I would err on the side of Matt's assumption that either it's gonna stay the same or it might even increase a little. Okay, thank you.
And, and I, I, I was able to, to get the information for your first question, Lucy, last year, um, there were a total of, um, six hundred and seventy-one visits to the pool. Of those six hundred and seventy-one visits, ninety-two were individual households, so ninety-two households visited the pool, um, at least once in October of last year.
Okay, thank you.
Does that, does that conclude your questioning?
Uh, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Town Manager, has anyone else indicated they wish to speak?
I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you, council, uh, unless someone is prepared to make a motion, I'm gonna turn it over to our council president to lead the discussion.
Okay, um.
Is anyone prepared, first of all, is anyone prepared to make a motion? If not, I will turn it over to our president to ably lead the discussion.
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay.
Okay, uh, motion to approve extension of the pool season to November twenty eighth. Um, at a cost recommended by the town manager and the town pool committee, I think the numbers need to be worked on, so that would be, uh, the motion that I would use.
Well, I think before somebody seconds that, you need to have a number in there, is that correct, Mr. Town Attorney?
Okay, I can, I can, I can, I can, can I redo the motion?
Of course, it's, it's open.
Okay, motion to approve extension of the pool season to November twenty eighth at a cost of, uh, twenty-four thousand dollars as recommended by the town pool committee.
Okay, is there a second? So the motion fails for a second. Does anyone else wish to make a motion?
I'd like to get the motion up for discussion so that we can talk about it, so, um, I'll move a motion that it be opened through November. But the operating budget contingency should have in it at least twenty-five thousand after, um, the withdrawal from the pool being open in November. There is only forty thousand in the operating contingency, and that would allow fifteen thousand towards the opening of the pool from the town, but the rest would have to come from fees. Um, and that's, that it's there for discussion, that's why.
Okay, so, so.
Can you say that again, Robin?
Yeah, um, I'm saying that the town would advance fifteen thousand for the pool opening in November. Uh, that allows twenty-five thousand to remain in our operating contingency fund, if we do the whole thing, there's only sixteen thousand left in our operating budget contingency for the rest of the year, and that, that's a little dangerous.
Can you say it as a motion?
Well, let's, let's, uh, see if the town attorney can help craft a motion that is legally and technically sufficient.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, so that, the motion was fine, but just point out that it includes, as I heard, a motion to amend the budget, which would require a supermajority vote.
Uh, so, can you, can you state the motion that would be?
Sure.
It, it would be legally and technically sufficient so that Councilmember Kumar can second it, and then we can have discussion.
Sure, it was a motion to hold the pool open until November, Mr. Barr, through November, and to amend the budget to appropriate fifteen thousand dollars for that purpose.
Well, it, or it's fifty, I'm not sure it's amending the budget, it's fifteen thousand from the operating budget contingency fund, I don't think that requires an amendment.
Oh, fifteen thousand from the rainy day.
No, no, the operating budget contingency.
Operating contingency.
The rainy day fund.
Yeah, don't mention the rainy.
Okay, so let's get this, let's get it clear, so the other councilors can understand what they're gonna be discussing.
Right, so we would partially pay for opening it through November, we'd expect the rest from fees from the users. Um, and the rationale behind that is that if we pay for the whole thing, which is twenty-four thousand approximately from the operating budget.
Before you, before you, before you discuss it, we need to have a clear motion.
Can I try again, Robin? Uh, motion to approve extension of the pool season to November twenty eight, twenty twenty-one at a cost of fifteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, that, that.
As recommended by the town manager and the town pool committee.
Okay, is that?
Second that one.
Okay, fine, now you're, now to discuss, and you might wanna start it off, Councilor Barr, because you had a.
Yeah, right, it, it, it's basically protect, protecting our operating budget contingency fund is why we will only partially pay for it. Because we fully pay for it from the operating budget contingency fund, it uses most of the fund, that's the challenge, that's the problem.
Okay, is there, is there discussion?
I have I, can I say something?
Yes, Councilor Heller.
Um, I, I think this amendment, and I don't know, you know, I don't know if I can amend the amendment, but, but I think it would have to.
You can, you can amend.
Okay, then I would like to amend the amendment that says that it's based on the, the leftovers being paid for by town residents, and if we can't raise the money, we can't open the pool, it has to be, the money has to be paid for upfront, and then, and then, then we can open the pool, if not, we can't open it.
Okay.
Can I plead back?
Hold on a second, can the town attorney translate that into a legally, and legally and technically sufficient motion?
So if I understand it, Mr. Mayor, it would be a motion to appropriate from the operating contingency fifteen thousand in order to pay the cost upfront, but then to close the pool early, if it looks like user fees will not cover that cost, am I understanding correctly?
That's sort of it, I would say the pool closes as we've, as we, as stated in the end of October, not unless we raise the amount of user fees that we need to open the pool, that's all, whatever that, whatever that is.
Okay, so.
But they'll be collected on a, a daily basis, right?
Debbie, Debbie, what could happen, if I may jump in, with, with what you're saying, it's, let's say it's twenty, uh, you know, five, twenty-six thousand, yeah, so, and you do it on a cost per week. We, by saying fifteen, Karen, we are covering two weeks of it being open, so it could run for two weeks and then shut down.
No, that's not what I'm saying.
I know, I know, so, but it's tricky to sort of do the mix.
You, if the pool is gonna be open through November, and it's at a cost of twenty-four thousand dollars, and the town will take out of its contingency fees fifteen thousand, then the other, the, the rest of it is at nine thousand dollars, did I do that math right?
Roughly, correct.
Okay, that nine thousand dollars has to be paid for by user fees that have to be collected beforehand.
Okay, so, Mr. Town Attorney, can you, can you clarify that, so everybody can, so the council member can understand what he's seconding?
A motion to hold the pool open through November with the appropriation of fifteen thousand from operating contingency contingent on the town raising nine thousand dollars from pool user fees.
Okay, is that what, is that what you intended, Councilor Heller?
Yes, that word contingent is what I guess I was looking for, thank you, Ron.
I borrowed that from the town manager.
Thank you, Matt.
Okay, is there a second to the, to the amendment?
I will struggle to second that, because I can't quickly do the math on what it would take to.
Okay, so now, it's been, now you're discussing the amendments of the motion.
Can, if, if I may, just jump in quickly, I think by my, based on the pool committee's survey, which had just under ninety people say that they would be willing to pay it, it would be in the neighborhood of one hundred dollars per family to, to use that.
I came up with the same number, Matt.
My, 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 my question, um, and maybe this could be part of the, the discussion, um, practically and from an administrative standpoint, how do we, how do we get that money before we know whether or not the pool would stay open, and what, you know, if somebody says, sure, I'll pay that, and then they don't, we still have to pay the bill to American Pool, um, in which case, I guess we would come back to you and say, we need a, you need to approve further, further expenses, I guess, I don't know.
I think it's a two-step process, Matt, the first step is to put a note out to the town, you know, saying that, that, that town membership is going, town usership is gonna have to fund this, and it is our, it is our understanding, it'll be a hundred dollars a family. And, and they, and, and say, please commit to that by next week. Then, fees are due the week after, if we can't raise, if we can't get the money in hand, then we can't do it, that's all.
I just wanna clarify something, uh, Robin made a motion, I seconded it, I think Debbie made an amendment, but it wasn't seconded. I said I would struggle to second it.
Didn't you second it?
I did not, I said I would struggle to second it without the math.
I misunderstood.
Yeah, so, I, I, and, so I want, I think we are discussing Robin's motion.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, and, and, and I wanna make, I just wanna say something in support of that motion, which is that I really thought Maya's testimony was very compelling, and in fact, this was the question I asked Matt Zaff. I think it is a reality that I have an eight-year-old. Uh, I think maybe Deb, Shannon and I are the only ones with kids who are not in the, you know, have not been vaccinated yet, the pool is one of the only venues we have for the town to gather outside. Uh, I've constantly maintained that the pool is, pool house is more than a pool house, we should kind of call it a community center, actually, because it really is one of the places we all come together. Um, I think that it's very instructive, by the way, those of us who attended newcomers yesterday would have noticed that a lot of people entered the pool without going through the front desk. I think the member splash numbers are not the full picture of usage. I, I don't wanna say that it's missing the overwhelming number of people attending the pool, but I do think it misses people attending the pool, I've often gone and my kids have not been entered into the pool, so keeping that in mind, if last year six hundred and seventy-two people used in October, and Matt's Trolinger's estimate is that these are likely the committed numbers that are gonna come in November, that's close to a hundred households. If you add to that the folks that are not being counted, that's not an insignificant number of usage, this was the other question I had for Matt's app, what is the understanding of demand? So, I just wanted to lay out why I think we should look at this, uh, you know, I think the, the reasons presented are pretty compelling.
Okay, is there?
And we have the budget in the contingent.
Okay, thank you, is there further discussion on the motion?
Again, if we're gonna, I, I wanna speak to that motion.
Okay.
I, 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 I'm, I'm gonna go by my stance, that if we open this pool late in the afternoon, that most children are not going to come, it's going to be dark and it's going to be cold. They might come on the weekends, because they can come during the light, and, and, and I know we're not talking about opening on the weekends, but I, um, I'd love to be proven wrong on this, but I don't think I'm wrong. I don't think the kids are gonna, I think the kids are gonna come home from school and go, mommy, it's dark out, I don't wanna go, mommy, it's cold, I don't wanna go. And I don't think that, I think when November hits, they're not gonna be swimming, and therefore I can't, I can't, um, I can't in good consciousness and be fiscally responsible, um, approve this, uh, uh, approve this, uh, motion. And I, I, listen, I love children and I, that's what I did for a living, besides I had three of them, you know, and I would do anything for children, but I, I don't think that opening the pool in November is gonna help our children, I don't. So.
Councilor Rovak wanted to speak. Go ahead, Councilor Rovak.
Um, so I was just wondering, as far as like, I agree with Debbie in terms of like the numbers, and it's all dependent on the weather. I mean, if it's gorgeous out, people probably go to the pool, if it's not, people aren't gonna go, and, um, you know, so I think that as we, it, it's only October fourth, like, do we know, um, like, do we have to make this decision now, or can we wait and see what like the further numbers are into October? Um, and also, on a side note, I do agree with Debbie that if we have it, we should have it funded by the families that, or, you know, the people that do wanna pay for the extra surplus or, you know, deficit from the budget, um. But, so I, I'm not sure what any of the motions are anymore, and so, um.
Well, okay, so.
Can I respond, uh, can I respond to Councilmember Heller?
On, let's, um, review what. On, let's, um, review what's going on here. So Councilor Barr made. A motion, which I think, Councilor Revak, you understand what that motion was, right?
That was just to use fifteen thousand dollars.
Let's have the, uh. The town manager or the town attorney restate that motion that's on the floor.
Councilmember Barr's motion was to open the pool through November. And to appropriate fifteen thousand from operating contingency.
Okay, so that's the motion on the floor. Then Councilmember Heller attempted to. Make an amendment, which discussed what you were just talking about, but no one seconded it. So now it's discussion with the the motion that's on the floor, but anyone can still amend that motion before you vote.
Would we be able to, and maybe this is a question for Matt, like. What if you can move the hours to be three o'clock to seven? Like, is that an option or is that not an option? Option, okay.
Does the school close?
Like, my daughter's school gets out at three fifteen. To three thirty.
Same here.
So I I can tell you for Montgomery County. Uh, the high school gets out at two thirty, the middle school gets out at three, the elementary school at three thirty.
Okay. So. I'm going to say this wrong. I would like to second Debbie's amendment and then add my own amendment that we should look to open the pool earlier. In the day than the four o'clock start.
Okay, so. Uh, Councilor Heller. Needs to restate, maybe the town attorney can, um. Restate that amendment and then, um. She could, she could add what Councilor Revak wants, if it's up to her, but it's up to her. So why don't you restate?
Councilmember Heller, do you find that? Councilmember Revax amendment was friendly? Would you accept that as an add-on to yours?
It was definitely a friendly amendment.
Right, so then.
That's a term of legislation, not. Of a motion, okay.
Dearment.
The council member, council member, Mr. Town Attorney, could you please restate? Councilor Heller's amendment with the friendly amendment?
Sure. So Councilmember Barr's motion was to keep the pool open through November. And appropriate fifteen thousand from operating contingency. Councilmembers, Councilmember Heller's amendment. Was to. Make the. Extension contingent on the town being able to raise nine thousand dollars in user fees. And Councilmember Revax friendly amendment was to also. Open the pool earlier on weekdays. Starting at. Was it, uh, three, three thirty?
Um, three, three to seven versus four to eight.
Okay, so is. Councilor Revak, you wish to second that amendment, is that correct?
Yes, I would second that.
Okay, so now the amendment is under discussion.
We would need to second.
The pool chair has his hand up, I think.
Well, the pool chair isn't involved with this.
No, I just want to clarify something, Jeffrey. The Shannon's amendment would need to be also seconded, right?
It was.
Shannon, seconded.
Hers was a friendly.
Yeah, friendly, got it, got it.
Yeah, her friendly amendment was added, so.
I would love to hear from the chair, uh, pool committee chair, if it's possible.
That.
Or.
At this point, the council is, there's, this is a question amongst.
Okay, the one thing that I was going to say about fifteen thousand dollars is that it could be interpreted either as, uh, the. The town has to raise another nine thousand dollars or fifteen thousand would take you through two weeks in November and then you would shut it because that's all the money you had.
Well, that's a good idea.
And as far as I'm concerned, I I don't really care which way it is interpreted. Um, it's just I'm trying to protect the operating budget contingency fund because we do need that money.
Debbie, that's what I was telling you earlier, that we. If it has to run beyond that. You know, if we only appropriate fifteen K, it could be fewer hours for four weeks or the full hours for two weeks, you know?
I think it actually makes more sense to open it for two weeks than close it.
But that, but that would take away that whole Thanksgiving week where the kids are home.
Right. And so that's, that's, oh, it's the point there is, can they raise nine thousand to do that, you know, that's it.
Well, they can raise nine thousand.
Pay, pay a hundred dollars to do Thanksgiving at the pool? I don't know, doesn't sound attractive.
So is there further discussion on the amendment?
I appreciate the spirit of the amendment. I I'm, it's unclear to me. Whether people will pay. I also feel, you know, and I don't think this is the intent. I I, you know, I don't think this is what councilmembers, Heller and. Revak intending, but it feels like a penalty. To people with families and. You know, and also, I I, hold on, hold on, hold on, you can, you can get it. I I, like I said, I don't think that's your intent, but it feels that way. And, um, you know, so. I I also don't, I know we've thrown remarks about fiscal responsibility, but. I I think these are the kinds of things we plan for in a contingency. I think Maya's remarked that. That this is an extraordinary year. We still have kids unvaccinated in a pandemic that has scaled over seven hundred thousand people. So I I don't think that. There's no other year you would consider a contingency.
I think that it's not, it's not a punishment to any family. I think that we're trying to do and like bend over backwards as much as we possibly can. To keep the pool open for November and like having, you know, some families like. Who want to use it, be able to use it. You know, if if they want to do that, then they should pay because why would we have the pool open in November? I mean. It's cold and dark. So, I mean. I feel like it's more, we're trying to be very accommodating to people.
I would also like to say, uh, Kavir, that I will never. Ever throw, throw around the term fiscal responsibility. May, maybe that's how you felt I said it, but I didn't use it as a hook or a way to get my way. I think it's not fiscally responsible for us to spend. Money to open this pool in November. That's all. You know, I'm just trying to do my job and protect and protect. Our snow shoveling and other such things and, um.
This is the contingency, this is the contingent.
Whatever, but to say that I'm throwing around fiscal responsibility is not very nice.
No, I I didn't say that. I said that when we say fiscal responsibility. That's why we have, that is being fiscally responsible to have a contingency. That's why we tap into a contingency when unexpected things happen. That's being fiscally responsible. Is by tapping into a contingency and we have a contingency and I seconded Robin's motion.
Okay.
To not tap into it aggressively.
But with Robin's motion, who pays for the leftover money then? If he said fifteen thousand dollars and then. You know, there's a ten thousand dollar deficit, who who in Robin's motion pays for that? Or does it just not pass?
Well, that is what we are comfortable. You know, making available.
So, so, but that's not the cost of what the pool is. So how, how, who pays for it?
He can either decide to open it for two weeks in November and not raise fees or alternatively try to collect fees to extend it. To the end of the month. That's their call.
We don't need to mandate that. We just make available from the contingency, given everything we just considered, fifteen thousand.
Well, it's not the pool committee, it's the manager.
Exactly, sorry, it's the manager, yeah.
The pool management, thank you, the pool management.
And and in the, in the past, Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, but the the pool manager has provided. A quote for the. The extension.
Correct.
Right. This is Steve, and and the town has to. Sign a contract. And it's not fair to American Pool, the management company, to say, well, if we don't raise some fees, we're going to stop two weeks short and we'll let you know. Middle of November how we're doing. You know, and we as the council, we have to figure out what. We want, what we want to do, what what the residents want or need. And. Um, sorry, just, oh, I'm interjecting. Two other, um. Data points. I've heard people talking about. The survey and, uh, cost distribution and. I heard the term. You know, like, something under ninety families said they would pay. That that's, that's not the case. If you go to the pool survey. It's eighty-one individuals. Said they would pay, would be willing to pay some fees. But those might be multiple individuals in a single swimming family. Um, I'm not sure that that family would want to spend. One hundred dollars per person, four hundred dollars or so for a couple of weeks of swimming in November. And I'm also concerned about usage. This last week in September. On the weekdays, the usage never went above twenty individuals. On the weekends, it was a hundred and six on Sunday and seventy-six on Saturday. And I believe those were all. Nice days. I think the usage is just going to go down through the month of October, which is fine. We're extent, we've extended ourselves in the town's budget. To support our families in COVID, but I, I don't see any merit in continuing to November at all.
Okay, is there further discussion on the amendment? To the motion?
I have a question for Matt Trolinger. Matt, the, what Robin was saying, if we make fifteen thousand available. Is it? Can we, is it possible to see American Pool running the pool through middle of November? Was that part of your? Discussions with them? Would they be open to a two-week? Um, so then that's a very defined period. We are making money available for a defined period. And that's it. And then it's clear signaling to them, we don't need to, you know, get into the fees business. What's your, what's your read on that? Do you have any perspective on that?
It's a good question, and I'd not. Matt Zaff may have a better sense of this than I do. Um. I. My understanding was their. Hesitancy, um, in any of the proposals. Was more about. Number of hours available to the lifeguards. And so to extend it for two weeks as long as we.
Give them advance warning, like this week. They can, they can, yeah.
That, that's right, um.
So picking, picking up on, thanks, Matt, picking up on, again. Possibly prone to misinterpretation. We're picking up on what what Shannon was saying, you know, to the extent, you know, let's do our best to make this happen. Maybe we just say, look, we are willing to make fifteen K available, given the case that's been made. And that's it. And that runs the pool through a specified date mid-November. I don't know what that would be. You know, and so we've done our best. We've extended it beyond October. Um, you know, and that goes towards helping families with kids having a venue. Um, to, to congregate.
I, I, Kavir, I'd amend it to. Uh, the first two weeks in November and up to fifteen thousand dollars to cover expenses during that time.
So do you want to make a new motion?
Well, hold on, right now there is an amendment on the floor. You can make an amendment. To the amendment.
No, let's vote on the amendments first.
Okay, is there further discussion on Councilmember Heller's amendment? Is everybody, I think everybody understands what they're voting on. Is that correct? I'm assuming. All those in favor of Councilor Heller's amendment? Signify by saying aye or raise your hand.
Debbie, are you putting for your amendment?
No.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so the motion fails zero to five. Now, is there further discussion on the motion? The original motion, or did Councilmember Barr want to make?
I'll amend the motion now so as to restrict it. So, uh, the motion is to open the pool for the first two weeks of November and allocate costs up to fifteen thousand dollars from our operating contingency funds.
Okay, Kavir, a second. Okay, so Councilor Kumar seconded that, and I assume, Mr. Town Attorney, that is legally and technically sufficient?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I hate to throw a wrench into the works, though, but looking at the. The pool extension options, American Pool offered three options. So, you know, we don't know whether they're they're going to accept this fourth option, as Council President Circo noted.
This is the question I asked Matt. So Matt, we need your guidance on that. Matt Trolinger, sorry.
Well, no, could. Mr. Town Attorney, couldn't they pass it? Couldn't it be contingent on the town manager obtaining?
Of, of course. Yeah, of course, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to point out that. This is subject to American Pool's approval.
I can add that to the motion, contingent on our being able to get a contract agreement with American Pool.
Okay, and do you accept that, Councilor Kumar?
Yes.
Okay, so now we have discussion on the amendment to the motion. Is there further discussion on that amendment? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so the motion fails. Two to three. So now is there further discussion on the original motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Wait, I'm not sure what I'm voting on.
Okay, the motion is to allocate fifteen thousand dollars to extend the pool through the end of November, contingent on. Uh, the remaining funds being raised through the pool management committee.
Is there, and is there further discussion on that, on that motion? So I think, a- all those in favor? I see Councilor Barr and Councilor Kumar, all those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, the the motion fails two to three. Thank you, everyone. The next item, public hearing motion to approve. Of Open Waters Aquatics hosting a private swim lessons at the Somerset Pool through the month of October from four thirty to five thirty P M. Monday through Thursday is recommended by the town pool committee, Mr. Town Manager.
Sure, so, um, this was also approved, uh, correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, Chair Zaff, but also approved unanimously by the swim team, excuse me, by the pool committee, um. A similar arrangement was made last year when the pool rules prohibited any guests from going. And so the council. Made an exception for, um, Coach Christina Lennox to provide this. So the council approving this again is. It requires, um. A cup, a couple of things to hap- happen. We need to grant an exception to the rule that only residents can access the pool. So that's section one forty-nine, five A of the town code. And we need to give consent to Ms. Lennox conducting business at the Somerset Pool, which is otherwise prohibited without council approval. In section one forty-nine, two K. She described Open Waters Aquatics as a swim school for kids who love swimming and want to be in the water in the off-season. Uh. It's three hundred dollars if a student wants to participate in all the practices and she also offers. Two hundred dollar, ten practice packs and a hundred twenty dollar, five practice packs. Um. I've, again, sort of laid out the facts for you, uh, in my short little memo primer ver- blurb there.
And we might want to have the pool committee chair, uh, make his presentation.
Yep. Yep, Matt Zaff may, may want to, uh, expound on, on what I've said.
Sure, Matthew Zaff, Dorset Avenue Pool Committee Chair, once again, um. Hopefully you all were able to read the minutes from the pool committee meeting. Um, which had some much greater detail about all of this. Um, including the fact that this was raised last summer and approved. Um, I I would tell you a few things. One, um, it's, it's not just. Coach Christina, it's also Coach Alex and actually, uh, former Dolphin Swim Coach, Bess Picard-Treat. Um, the three of them doing it good. It's something that I consider an absolute wonderful thing. For the kids, um, both kids on the swim team and not kids not on the swim team. Uh, in fact, I had one parent write to me how wonderful this was because she finally is going to get her daughter to, you know, get in the pool with some real instruction. Um, because she's been intimidated. get in the pool with some real instruction, because she's been intimidated to do the swim team for years. And, and this is a, a godsend in an unbelievably inexpensive manner compared to all other options out there. It's also an opportunity for certain kids who honestly can't make a lot of the other teams. So there, there are certain teams that offer winter swimming like Talson and Sea Devils and M Cap and ASA. And due to both the fact that they're very competitive and the fact that pool space is so limited, they've had to cut people and not allow people into their programs. And this is filling an incredible void for, for a lot of kids. In addition, for a lot of families where they don't have the ability to get their kids to places, you know, that provides an opportunity within walking distance. Swim lessons have gone on for years at the pool, both single, group, and including like last summer when we initially had no swim lessons due to COVID. And then the council unanimously approved reinstituting swim lessons, again, both single, one-on-one and group lessons. And I think that this is, you know, something that is just a true benefit to our kids. And we, the entire pool committee highly, highly recommends that it be allowed to continue.
Okay, thank you. Council President Circo, do you have any questions?
Just to, to clarify, some of these, the coaches might be non-residents, but am I correct that all of the student swimmers would be residents?
Hundred percent. No guests allowed. Hundred percent Somerset residents. Correct.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Barr, do you have any questions?
Yeah. I quite in favor of this, as long as it is restricted Somerset residents and that the activities are restricted to coaching. In other words, the coaches can't make any site money from selling whatever equipment or anything to, to, to the residents.
Hundred percent correct. That is the case. Is that it, Councilor Barr?
That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Heller.
I have a couple of questions. One is for Ron. Ron, you know, in reading, in reading, you know, Christina's flyer, it looks like a business to me. She's got a name for it, Open Water Aquatics. So that connotates that it's a business. Ron, can they run a business out of the pool?
Oh, the, the town code prohibits commercial activities at the town pool unless the town council gives its consent.
Okay.
So on the agenda tonight for the council to decide whether the council should consent to this commercial activity with the limitations Mr. Zaff and Councilmember Barr noted.
Are we? If we, Ron, if we, if we say that we let her do this and it's clearly a business, does she have to pay us?
That, that, no, she doesn't have to unless the council were to condition its consent in such a manner.
Does this leave us open for other people to say, well, you let the coach do it last year, why not let my niece do it, who's an Olympic swimmer? You know, or my son, who's an Olympic swimmer, why can't he do it? Does this, does this make us, you know, leave us open for problems in terms of, you know, ferreting these things out, like, you know, next year?
Possibly. The town council always has to consider what precedent it sets when it grants exceptions with respect to future requests. They may be distinguishable for one reason or another, you know, based on the limitations that are suggested for this one. But yeah, yeah, I mean, I guess that's, that's all I can say. Sure, it could create others or could lead others to requesting similar approval.
You know, Matt, when we first spoke, Matt Zaff, you said they were going to take up three lanes for afternoons a week. And that, so the three lanes would just be theirs. The other three lanes would be for lap swimmers. But what about the kids? Because a lot of the kids that come to play, they want to play in the deep end. I've been kicked out of there a lot of times this summer and happily moved over and shared a lane so the kids could go off the diving board, because if this is about kids. And, you know, I spoke very passionately when we approved October to keep this pool open in October because of the kids and because of COVID. So what's happening to them?
So I'll address that, you know, and, and this is very similar, like, in regards to water aerobics, for example, which I would say falls in the exact same category as a business operating out of the pool that the council has approved. And just like with water aerobics, where they take up four lanes and we have two lanes still for lap swimming, so there's no diving board use during that. When the pool committee sort of evaluated the different hours in which, you know, there are several hours during the day where we have three lanes for lap swimming and several hours during the days where we have six lanes for lap swimming. And through this, the total number of hours for six lap lanes will not change. The total number of hours for three lap lanes will not change. So the actual amount of time for the diving board use stays exactly the same as does the total amount of lap swimming for residents. Does not get affected by this in any way, shape or form. So we're completely diving board neutral. We're lap swimming neutral. And in discussions with the town manager, town pool manager Helen, we were very cautious about, okay, how do we want to do this to make sure we are not impacting kids using the diving board? And again, this sort of goes back to our other recommendation about, you know, possibly opening at four if we were going to stay open in November. Her observations are that we're not seeing that demand at that time, but we are seeing it later. And so in reality, this could potentially, by us shifting how we are allocating the times for diving board, increase the diving board usage, because we're now opening it up a little bit later when the kids are actually there to use it, when before we had six lap lanes.
So wait a second.
I would sort of say that were the, the key things, the key points being that we were very adamant when approving this and looking at how to do it, that we would definitely stay diving board neutral and that we would definitely stay lap lane neutral for the, for the residents involved. And again, it's, you know, it's very similar to how it is with water aerobics.
So this would, no, what, water aerobics in this are not apples to apples. I'll address that in a second. But, um, the, 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 these swim lessons will take, will take place from four thirty to five thirty, correct?
Correct.
And that's kind of prime time for the kids, okay? Because they're going to have to go home and do homework and do dinner soon after. So I do beg to differ you, with you that this is, that this is great, that this is okay for those kids. Let's put that aside. I think the council heard me on that. But you cannot compare this to water aerobics. Water aerobics is not done except in this off, well, no, it's not done on during school hours. So it doesn't impact the children. And the only reason we did, gave them four lanes this year was everyone cried COVID, they need more space. Okay? So it's really not apples to apples. And I think it's, it's not a fair comparison and it's not a business. This is a group of people who want to do water aerobics and they, and the town hired a instructor to come in and do it. So I don't think that's a fair thing. But going on, I want to know, um, I wanted to, how, how many, I know she had a meet and greet on Friday. How many people did she sign up?
I don't think anyone signed up at the meet and greet. I think that was purely a, like, come and meet her for the kids that weren't on the swim team. And then also, like, just parents to ask questions.
Okay, I also heard that she decided to have another session after the kids. So this is four thirty to five thirty, so five thirty to six thirty, she's going to train, she's going to give lessons to the adults.
No, so that is on a, if the adults want to have a one-on-one with her or one-on-two, that is totally separate. And in fact, one of the things you told her was that the, whereas the lap lanes would be reserved, the three lap lanes for her during the four thirty to five thirty, there's absolutely no reserving of lap lanes for her from five thirty to six thirty. Any adults that would want to do that must make a, basically must go and reserve it themselves through the normal member splash system. I also, just one thing I want to point out, that originally, we had thought that this was going to take place in September. And when Matt Trolinger and I discussed it back in August, we actually adjusted the member splash system so that there was no reservations from four thirty to five thirty for the entire month of September. And I received literally zero complaints about that. We haven't had any issues whatsoever. And so that the, you know, that has been blocked off in the member splash system, but absolutely not. She will not have any sort of priority over lanes other than the four thirty to five thirty. If a resident adult wants private instruction from her, they'll have to get a reservation themselves, just like I would through member splash.
Okay, and, and Matt, it sounds like this is something that you did with her, because it didn't originally come before the pool committee. I don't think it went to the management committee, but it sounds like you worked with her to do this, and then you went to Matt Trolinger to change member splash. Is that correct?
So it wasn't just me, it was several parents within the town. We did it last year. And so what happened was last year, we had basically the pool, the swim team season ended. And about eight of us went to the coaches of the swim team and said, hey, would you keep something going? Like a clinic for the kids. And they said yes. And now, if you all remember last summer, we were down to one swimmer per lap lane. So we were, you know, basically that was going to be six kids per hour. At that point, the town council had approved allowing swim lessons again. We had a meeting of the pool management committee, which at that time was the town manager, Matt Trolinger, the mayor, state mayor Jeffrey Slavin, town council president Marnie Scholl and myself as pool committee chair. The four of us had a meeting on August twelfth of twenty twenty, in which we went over this amongst many other things. And it was determined that the clinic, which would be a six-person, six-lane, so they were going to take up all six lanes for one hour a day, twice a week, that that clinic fell under the same umbrella as swim lessons that the council had already approved and therefore did not require any additional approval, just required adjustment to the member splash system. So again, the same group of parents and then a couple others who had wanted to participate last summer, but unfortunately weren't able to, because again, we were limited to the six. We again went to the, the swim coaches and wanted to do the same thing. I again went back to Matt and said, seems to me the same thing. Let's block off the lanes. We were all good.
Um, Matt, one last question for you, and that is, I know you're good at educated guesses. So how many people do you think she's really going to have in this swim school?
So it's funny, if you'd asked me last week, I would have told you maybe ten. Based on the number of parents, both swim team and not swim team that, that have reached out to me, specifically because of this being on the agenda and, and honestly fear of you not approving it, I might guess that it's more like twenty. I, you know, it, and probably the number of kids might be even higher than that, because, you know, one family might have two kids that do it, or three kids that do it. So, you know, I think that the number of kids could be twenty plus. And I might even be wrong, it might even be more than that, especially since, like, I'll give you a perfect example. My daughter Olivia, she'll do it Monday and Wednesday, but she won't do it Tuesday, Thursday. So there might be, you know, some others that do it only one day a week, or some that do it, you know, three. So I think that the flexibility, which also a lot of these other programs just do not give you, is a real benefit and it might actually lead to more kids doing it.
Okay, sounds like she's going to make a lot of money. All right, that's it. Anybody else? Sorry, sorry, I monopolized that.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you, Derek.
Councilor Kumar.
Matt Zaff, did, I've lost my train of thought. It was a long discussion. Did you approach Christina or did Chris, did you, as in the group of parents you mentioned, approach her to bring coaching to the kids or did she approach you and the group of parents?
Oh, no, we approached her. It was herself and several other parents. We approached her.
And why did you approach her? And how did that, can you please tell us how that transpired?
Yeah, well, one, because she was the coach of the Dolphin Swim Team. So, you know, we know her, we trust her. Two, she was an Olympic swimmer. She's really, really good at coaching. She's also someone that our kids like and would actually be like willing to go to lessons with. And we, you know, what basically just wanted to have this ability for our kids to keep getting instruction. I'll give you an example. One of the other ones we were looking at, so Talson is one that requires you to do both stroke and endurance if you want to have an endurance session. So endurance is an hour, stroke is a half hour. And, but they won't let you do endurance unless you do stroke. And you have to do them on two separate nights, and it's a half hour to forty-five minute drive away. So if I wanted Olivia to be able to do stroke on Mondays, she could only do, she couldn't do endurance on Monday. She'd also have to do endurance on Wednesday. And now we're dealing with a half hour to forty-five minutes of driving both ways, you know, twice a week. And, and it's just, and at a cost triple to what Christina's charged.
Got it. And, and is Christina coaching alone or is she coaching with others?
It's actually her, Alex, who is the also, the assistant head coach of the Dolphins and then Bess Picard-Treat, I know her as Bess Picard, she's now Bess Treat, who is a fourth grade teacher at Somerset Elementary, but also was the Dolphins head coach for a number of years.
And a town resident.
And a town resident, yep.
And, and in terms of pricing, we got an email, a number of emails from town residents. One of them made a case that this is one of the more affordable options. Can you tell us a bit more on how this pricing compares with other options?
Sure.
I think you were saying that already, but
Yeah. You know, I, I personally know of Talson, because my daughters have done it. Same number of sessions, and this is if you go with the, you know, I'm just going to compare the three hundred dollars for all sessions. Talson is triple that for the same number of sessions. Sea Devils is about ten times that cost. I haven't looked into one-on-one swim lessons in a while, but the average rate is somewhere between fifty and a hundred dollars an hour. I can actually tell you my own fourteen-year-old daughter, who, you know, I love her and she's an incredible swimmer. She is certainly not an Olympian. She charges twenty-five dollars per half hour for a private one-on-one lesson. I believe the cheapest group lesson you can find in this area is thirty-five dollars an hour. And, and again, those also then require driving. And I would also point out a really key difference, which sort of goes back to Maya's point earlier. It's almost all these other programs that are indoors. And this is an outdoor option, especially for the unvaccinated kids, that makes it so much more appealing than like, for example, Olivia, who thankfully is vaccinated. She also does Sea Devils on the other days. She's there, you know, at St. Albans. So she's swimming indoors, you know, and, and so this gives an outdoor option that is also incredibly parent-friendly from the sense of the kids can just walk there or, you know, the commute's a much shorter commute.
You said a group of residents sought out the pre-existing coach of the Dolphins, the assistant coach and a previous coach of the Dolphins to give lessons to kids who are also residents in town, and then you open this up to other residents in town.
Yep.
And that additionally, this is cheaper than most available options from your understanding and the parents that are, who are residents of our town in terms of price shopping for these swim instructions for their children.
Not just most, every.
Every. Okay, thank you so much.
Is that, is that it? Thank you. Councilor Ravak.
Oh, sorry, just trying to unmute, unmute. So Matt, was this brought, is this part of the swim team committee?
No.
Okay, I guess that, like, from my standpoint, like, I, I'm having a hard time understanding why, like, why then Talson or, you know, someone else wouldn't come in and say, you know, well, I want to get your residents and have them all pay me and swim laps in that pool. Like, why, you know, I, I just, I guess, I just feel like it's kind of favoritism to Christina, which I understand in a way because she was the swim team coach. But, you know, how does this not open up the door for a lot of other people to say, well, you did it for this, so why aren't you doing it for here?
So the, the short answer I would say is demand. You know, Talson, if, if you restrict it to Somerset residents, which I certainly hope you do. If if you restrict it to Somerset residents, which I certainly hope you do. They're not going to have a, the ability to make the money they want to make. Doing just Somerset residents, so I I don't see them coming in. Now, if it's open to anyone who wants to join Talson, absolutely, they jump at it, and that that is the whole reason, going back to a different discussion, that they wanted to rent lap lanes from us. But the, just the kids. They they wouldn't have the demand, just the Somerset kids, the demand to warrant it to get them in there. Um, and and that sort of again goes to to Sea Devils as well, to NCAP as well, as I say, these are very competitive swim teams. Like, they they compete year-round in meets, and you have to have certain times to be able to make these teams. Like, in order to be in Sea Devils, like, you have to go and try out. And and.
So I I I guess, I guess maybe my question was maybe better directed towards the town attorney.
Yeah, so it's. The the same question asked by council member Heller, similar to that question, what? What risk of precedent do you set? Again. You know, you might set a precedent for. Other groups. Who want to use the pool for commercial purposes, however, there are limitations proposed for this one. And that is that.
They have to be a resident.
Right.
Got it. And then, um, I was at the Friday, uh, meet and greet, and Christina did. Say that they were going to be doing this adult. Lap swim, and I I know at least one person that signed up and said that they had signed up for that adult lap swim. Um, so are are we saying that that isn't going to happen?
I I told Christina flat out that there is. No way that we could reserve an extra hour of lap lanes for her. That, you know, if she wants to do adult swim lessons, the same way. That you do one-on-one or one-on-two kids swim lessons, or, you know, honestly, anyone swim lessons. Um, that the adults would have to reserve the lanes through member splash, just like anyone else. And that there definitely is not a second hour available, in essence, to her. Unless you all decide you want to do that. Um, you know, I'm certainly not asking you to, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't fight you on it if that's something you just all of a sudden decide you wanted to do. Uh, but no, that is certainly not anything that we have discussed in the pool committee or would recommend. You know, and we wouldn't recommend against it, but again, it's, you know, no, that's not on the table for her.
Okay, she, I don't know, there might be some confusion there. And then lastly, do you guys, um, have, like, do you? Are are we taking away lanes from lap swimmers that? That would have that? Those lanes available to them?
Nope, we are a hundred percent lap lane neutral, there'll still be lap lanes available at the same time.
Okay. That's it.
Okay, thank you. So before I, um, we take. Comments or questions from residents or guests, I I do need to ask a question and town attorney, which is. Doesn't the council need to see a contract? Before, like, with the, with the. With the water aerobics, there's a contract that. Is presented and you review before the, um. So I think if the council, um. Makes a decision on this tonight in favor of it, that it should be with the contingency that, um. It's reviewed by you, is that, isn't that what our procedures are?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that would be appropriate, so. If it were to be approved, it could be approved with the condition that. You know, a a contract is negotiated. By the manager and town attorney. Including the terms of importance for the council.
But usually, when it comes to contracts related to the pool, the council sees. The contract before they vote on it, isn't that right? Isn't that true with the management contract and the? With the water aerobics?
It's true with the management contract. I I'm not aware of the aerobics.
Oh, okay, just, I just wanted to check. Okay, thank you. Mr. Town Manager, are there? Any comments or questions from residents or guests?
Nobody has indicated to me that they have any questions or comments at this time.
Okay, thank you. Council, are you prepared to make a motion?
Robin?
Yeah, I'll do it, okay.
Go ahead.
Um, I move approval of, um. Open Water Aquatics hosting private swim lessons, uh, at the Somerset Pool through this month of October. From four thirty to five, five thirty PM, Monday through Thursday. As recommended by the town pool committee.
Second. Okay, thank you. Is that, Mr. Town Attorney, is that? Legally and technically sufficient?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
So, okay, thank you. Okay, is there discussion?
Yeah, let let me just say one or two things about it, um, because there were some good points brought up and, um. In federal contracting, there's this idea of competitive bidding, and there's also a sole source justification. And I've heard one of the better sole source justifications, um, in my life, actually, in terms of what, how this has been described. Which is to say that Christina is, uh, the current Dolphins coach, um. And has therefore. Very good knowledge of the kids. Uh, that she will be teaching. Um, and that puts her in an extraordinary advantaged position. Which makes a sole source justification very clean. So that I see as reasonable. I also accept and do make part of the motion that it is only coaching. That we're allowing, we're not allowing any other business activity. And that is part of the motion. Stop there.
Do you want to add that to the motion?
I think I just did.
Okay.
Well.
I second that.
Okay, so that's, that is a friendly amendment, right, Mr. Town Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, fine, and you second it, Councilmember, okay, thank you. Did you have any other? Is there further discussion on the motion as amended, as friendly amended? Hearing that.
Go ahead. This is Steve. I have an idea for a, but I believe it'd be a friendly amendment that I think addresses some of the concerns raised by. My colleagues about the precedence here. And I was wondering if we could call this. To to approve of a, um. A pilot. So we're just piloting this one-month contract, we're not setting it up as a precedent that we'll do it every October. We're not saying we're going to continue to contract with this individual. We're just, we're just doing a pilot to see how this works.
Well, do you want to make that as, do you want to make that as an amendment?
I was proposing as a friendly amendment if that made sense to Robin.
Okay, Zach.
Accepted as a pilot proposal.
Does does that work, Mr. Town Attorney, adding that word pilot? And I assume that Councilmember Kumar. Accepts that.
I accept.
Thank you. Okay, is there further discussion on the motion as friendly amended? Hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Four to one, thank you very much. The next item is the manager's report.
Yes, thank you, um. Actually, a nice, natural segue into that, uh, one, one of the things that we. Didn't discuss, uh, in that. That consideration was. That the pool committee. Asks that the council. Consider an official policy for outside coaching at a future meeting. Um, some, some ideas might be a filing or permit. A filing fee or permit to use town park space or, um. The town receiving a portion of revenue or, uh. Or 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 none of those and just. Having to receive. Council approval, um. I I noted a couple of. Examples that the town has historically permitted tennis coaches to use the tennis courts. Under the auspices of being a guest of. Of a town resident at the Somerset Pool. And and then, um. Various swimming coaching lessons, um, to various degrees, as as evidenced by. The conversation that we just had. Um, so I've sort of earmarked that as a potential discussion topic for. Maybe a future, a future council work session, if if. If there's an appetite for for discussing it further. Um, moving along, um, one thing I wanted to mention is that, um. At, uh. For one of our our recent applications that the council heard. The town was asked to get some quotes for a transcript of the hearing. So this is just. Friendly reminder that, um. In ongoing cases, uh, the council shouldn't engage directly with an applicant or other. Um, other parties, uh, that are interested in in the case while it's still pending. And that, um, the town. Manager or town attorney in a lot of instances. Will be the primary communicator on those issues. Um. Let's see, so, uh, I also wanted to take an opportunity to. Congratulate on a job well done and thank Linda for, um, her work in. Taking the lead in organizing the flu clinic, um. The, it, it, last, last year was, um. We had a huge response last year, which was, which was good. Um, but it, there were also a lot of logistical issues and they were. Very, very much cleaned up this year, there was a a solid response. I I didn't hear a single negative thing, so, um, just bravo to to Linda for, um, for her work on that. Um, another event that, uh, we're, we're getting to that time of the calendar year again is Halloween, so, um. I've, I've been communicating a little bit with, uh, with Councilmember Kumar about this, um. I reached out to Aviva Rosenthal, who, as you may recall. Was sort of our, our resident volunteer lead on organizing. Halloween activities and events last year. She, she essentially said that. Because outdoor activities are a little bit more, um. A little bit more part of the norm now than last year when there was a little bit more trepidation. That the, she's not going to be as actively organizing a town event for Halloween, however. She did say that, um, she would really like the town to. Encourage and support another, um. Decorating contest like there was last year and advertise it and really try to gin up interest in it again. And then the other, the other part of that is that in one of. The recent county. Covid calls, they did say that they were going to release Halloween guidance. Primarily related to indoor Halloween activities. Um, but I think it's also worthwhile to. Promote those, that guidance and and encourage people to. To follow along with with that. Um, just wanted to run through a couple of, uh, highlights from, from. Some of the committees that have met and had some, um, interesting discussions lately. At the Public Safety Committee, um, one of, one of the issues. Raised by a member of the Public Safety Committee was the ambulance and, um. Emergency vehicle response. Uh, and staffing. Uh, as it pertained to coverage in Somerset. Mayor Slavin has has reached out and been in contact with Chief Goldstein of the Bethesda Fire Department. To set up a meeting.
County.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, uh, Montgomery County, uh, Fire Department, who who oversees. The whole apparatus to to speak, um, specifically about the Bethesda Fire Department. Excuse my misstatement, um. To present to the town council, um, and answer some of those, um. Questions that were raised about staffing. I also, um. I I wanted to, uh, you earmark for for future discussion that the committee. It has recommended that the town council consider. The removal of the sledding hill provisions to the town code, so that might be a future topic for. A council work session. Um, just as a reminder, um. This has come up a couple of times, but the town code has a specific section of it. That says that Cumberland Avenue should be left unplowed during significant snow events. So it can be a designated sled area for for children. Um. Then, uh, we also. Had a good discussion about the police coverage in town, um. One of the things that I. Realized, um, is that. We have signed contracts with our police officers, but. Not. Formal agreements on what what their duties really are and what the expectations are in terms of reporting to. The town and, um, and to myself, and so, um. And and. And and data that they they provide and and keep track of, and so that's something that, um, I'm going to work to formalize and. Also work with the committee to make sure that we're getting. The information that's most salient and most relevant, um. Uh, moving along, just quickly, then, uh, I think somebody had mentioned previously, the newcomers party. Happened over this weekend, I understand that, uh, there was a really great turnout, um. The newcomers welcoming committee, um, I also owe one of the committee members, um, who's. Kind of taken the lead on a project to then present to the committee as a whole, which then might go to the council, um. Is a a sort of. Primer on the town, got, just short description on town government and. The services that are provided, so when folks first move in, they they know. When trash and recycling pickup is, what the town council means, who who to call at the town office, how it, how it functions, what. What the committees are, just. Very short, high level, this is what your town government is, this is how you're represented at the local level. And then the other, the other thing is just a welcome letter that also talks about. Some of the. Less formal, but still no less defining characteristics of Somerset, like the the. Decoration at Halloween where that was one example where they said, I didn't know. That was a thing, and it would be nice when you first move into town to know, these are, these are some of the things to kind of look forward to, this. These are the ways that we build community in Somerset. Um, without having to. Experience it first and then kind of learn, learn that it exists your second year and and then participate. Um, the, uh, just over this weekend, I guess the Equity and Inclusion Committee had some discussions about, um. Getting some bids to make a, uh. The corner of Cumberland and Little Surrey. Uh, more accessible, do do some type of curb cut to make it more accessible. I don't have a whole lot of information on that yet, but, um. It has, has been brought to my attention that it's something that they're going to look at and ask, um, the council to consider. The Stormwater Study Committee, um, presented, excuse me, LIDC presented to the Stormwater Study Committee. And, um, together, we've worked out some high priority spots in town. Um, that the group of engineers would provide. Uh. Okay, group, group cluster guidance on what types of projects would work in there, and I I. As I understand it, they were in town today and will be in town tomorrow as well to to. Get a firsthand look at these areas and make recommendations to some of the homeowners there. And then in addition to that, the second part is. Part of their draft and master plan is creating a template. That lays out different topographical geographical characteristics and what types of. Projects and installations. Would help to mitigate stormwater flooding issues in those areas, so that even if you're not one of these. High priority marked areas that doesn't. Negate the fact that you might be having flooding or stormwater issues of your own. And therefore you'll be getting tools to help you and your neighbors also figure out what what might work to. To help solve, solve some of your issues there. Couple of projects that the Environment Committee's looking into, um. One is solar panels, both at the town hall property, they've identified. Uh, the hill actually in front of or behind, depending on what your, your vantage point is. Of the the tennis courts, so, uh, right off the road, essentially, to put some. Solar panels there facing up and that they thought that that would be a good space because, um. There wouldn't be trees ever blocking it because we have the tennis court right there, so there's a nice direct sunlight going there. Possibility of being able to not just power the town hall, but potentially. Hook into the grid of our streetlights, um. Apparently right at Dorset Avenue is where we switch over from where we're getting our power supply from DC versus Maryland. And there's an opportunity to save a lot of a lot more money on the DC end. So if we were somehow able to connect that to our transformer, transformer, I don't, I probably don't have the right vernacular, but whatever the hookup is over there, basically on the corner of, of Dorset and Wisconsin. Potential to be able to provide clean energy to our own streetlight grid. And then the other solar project that they are looking into and getting, getting some bids on is at the town pool. So again, to try to offset some of our electrical costs at the town pool and provide some, some clean energy there. The Parks and Natural Resources Committee has received the draft proposal for the spring tree planting. So I expect that will go on the October work session. And then for approval at the November meeting, they're also working on a new draft of the committee charter. And the committee chair is working with mayor to put together a list of nominees for the committee. Really all committees. Mayor Slavin and I are working on and will present to the town council, a worksheet of outgoing members in November. So by our, by our either charter or code, and now I can't remember, committee terms run January to December. So committee members should really be nominated and approved at the December meeting.
Well, it's staggered, but we'll, we'll.
Right. Yes. Yeah. Yeah. They're staggered in terms of the years, but each term runs January through December. So basically a third of every committee members come up for renewal every, every year. Just quickly running through the last couple of things I had were pickleball presentation is happening this Sunday. The, we, we had a masonry firm come to the pool and look into some stones that have popped up right next to the, the entrance of the pool. And we've had a cone there to try to avoid people from missing it. But they should be submitting a quote this week. And we also, which was something I think council member Heller had brought up there. They also looked into a more accessible path from the front of our town hall to the, the side yard of the town hall, which I think was brought up at maybe the fourth, fourth of July. So that, that proposal should also come to you relatively soon. Then the other is that an engineering firm Fair and Peers submitted a proposal for consideration to examine the parking lot safety at the town pool. This is something, it's been discussed a couple of times over, over the last year, two years. I, I think they seem like a pretty good match. They, they, they pride themselves on prioritizing small common sense solutions over large scale engineering projects. And so they've quoted us $4,000 to do a study and a report on recommendations on how to improve the parking and pedestrian safety at the, at the pool parking lot. So I can have that bid for consideration at the, at the council work session. I've been in talks with them to come the week that I, that I come back to, to meet there and sort of observe what foot traffic looks like. I also, if, if anybody wants to take the lead, you know, Linda or Doug or council member could, could be designated as the point of contact. I'm happy to set that up if, if anybody wants to seek to reach out to me if, if you want. And then the last thing I just wanted to discuss quickly is the rescue plan, American Rescue Plan Act. So several of our nearby municipalities, so I think section three, five, Chevy Chase Village, Garrett Park, Glen Echo, Martin's Editions, North Chevy Chase, Chevy Chase View. Might be missing somebody, but in any case, they've met several times to discuss collaborating on ARPA funds. And if not on specific projects that they can work together, then to do a joint joint RFP to hire an administrator that helps oversee all of their projects. I've had my own offline conversations and I sat in on a meeting this morning, actually. Frankly, at this point, I'm unsure whether it's worth it for Somerset to participate. Think the benefit of it would be, it would allow us to tap into and more easily navigate confusing and sometimes bureaucratic federal guidelines on how the money can be spent. On the other hand, we're in sort of a unique position in relation to our neighboring municipalities because most of our neighbor, most of our neighbors are looking for primarily stormwater related projects that they could justify under the guidance. Based on the numbers that I've put into some of the tools that have been made available, Somerset is probably going to be able to use 100% of our funds to recoup lost revenue based on how those calculations are determined. So that would actually give us a level of flexibility in how we want to use those funds that's not available to our neighbors.
Lost money. That's wonderful.
So, so may, so may require less navigational assistance. I know that we've talked about setting up maybe a town forum on ARPA funds.
Well, we're going to talk about that.
So that's not, yeah, I think that that's the next agenda topic. My last point on that was just that obviously wasn't that important because it's, it's gone. So I'll, I'll leave it there and open it up to any questions.
So before, before I go through the council with a round of questions, I do want to pre-congratulate Matt on his upcoming wedding this Saturday and and well-deserved vacation.
Well, thank you.
And, and I do want everybody to know that of course Linda is going to be the acting town manager. And I will be I'll, I'll be, well, I'm always around, but I'll be helping to guide her a little bit, but we, we both, both Matt and I know she's totally capable of running the place while he's away. So with that, I will turn it over. Yeah. We'll see if council president Circo has any questions.
No questions. I did want to reiterate or emphasize thanks to the committee for the newcomers party. It was a great event. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Barr.
Yeah. Getting back to the public safety committee. It seems that we have no oversight of police activities in town, but that is clear. Is that your impression too, Matt?
Yeah, I, I, I think that that's probably.
Well, Matt has, Matt has, Matt is basically the administrator of the police, as he is of all the employees. And it is hope that the committee will come up with a lot of recommendations that will then be considered by the council.
Yeah, I, I think, I think what, I think you're accurate in saying that, Robin. And I think that what's been difficult is to not have very much guidance on how to provide oversight and I I take responsibility for that. And I, I know that it's my responsibility then to formalize what those arrangements are. And I think that I, I, I'm anxious to work with the committee on it because I think that there's a real opportunity to make sure that we're, we're getting our money's worth and get it, you know, getting good, good coverage and good security and.
As we, as we discussed in orientation, we don't have the, the manager basically is in charge of all the employees. But there are no guidelines, there are no guidelines that, that the council has approved. So that's, that's something that needs to be implemented.
Should put that on our working group, our work session agenda. But you know, do you have access to the log of their activities in town?
So they've, basically what they do is they provide monthly crime stats in Somerset. And then they'll, they'll email me on an one-off basis, if there's something specific in town that they're responding to. Or Linda and I on, on occasion will say, hey, when are, when are you going to be in town next? Because we have X, Y, or Z issue. Can you please look into it? Then they'll report back to us. What we're not doing right now is shift reports to say, hey, you know, I worked from eight AM to 12 PM on Monday, the fourth. This is what I did. I, I surveyed traffic at the intersection of Dorset and Warwick for two hours. Then I, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
That's kind of what we need to know. Okay. So rather than, you know, this could get belabored, but, but we've talked about, we I'm glad you brought it up, but we need to start by bringing in the Bethesda, the, the Bethesda district commander. Because there's a lot of good questions that he can answer and also give us some guidance. So, so I, I don't mean to cut you off, but I, I think this is, this is a much larger discussion that we definitely need to have. So.
All right. Let's get it on.
Did you have any other, did you have any other question? Okay. Thank you. Council member Heller.
Um, no real questions. Just thanks for setting up the, um, the, uh, the walkway business. I think that's going to be great. And also the, um, the handicap entrance at the town hall. It's going to be really appreciated. So thank you. And have a great wedding.
Okay. Thank you. Council member Kumar.
Matt, thank you for all the great work. That was a great report. Lots of good things happening. And congratulations. I hope you enjoy your holiday. I wanted to, this is for when you come back. Many months after you come back, perhaps. The environment committee is, is picking up the issue of LED lights again. And we had the conversation, if you remember, you and Ron were going to look into this program and what were the total cost basis. So we should probably try and get that nailed for the budget season if we need to look at it more seriously.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah. I'll, I'll mark that down and make sure that that's something that I know that that was, that's always been, um, that was always kind of one of the bugaboo's of that issue is what's the cost going to be? So.
I know. I think we can nail it. We can nail it. I also wanted to say that I'm sure Linda will now be also keeping officers at the pool. I, I'll be working with you on that.
Very good.
Well, Councilor Kumar, that is very timely because that information all needs to be obtained before we start the budget process next year.
Exactly. Exactly. That's what I have an eye on.
I, I also want you all to know that even though Matt will be gone for three weeks, the week of October 23rd, he probably will be working late till late at night because we have, we're piling up lots of stuff. So, and that'll be one of the things. Thank you. Councilor Ravak, do you have any questions of Matt?
Uh, no, my question was just more, and maybe this is not the right time, but I had sent an email to Steve Circo about adding, from the public safety committee about adding to the discussion, the Cumberland sledding. And I just want to make sure that that can be included, or if there's another way I need to do that.
No, no, we'll, we'll the, the president and I will be meeting in a week to, to put together, help him put together the agenda. So but that needs to be worked on before the snow season.
I, I have the list of a few things that I'll be sending Steve and Jeffrey and Linda. Probably tomorrow that I, I have written down as potential work session topics. And then, you know, they, they may have some of their own and, and council members also might have something to add, but that's on my list.
Awesome. Thank you.
So thank you, council member. Thank you all council members. I know the hour is late. We only have two quick things to do before we adjourn. First is we need to schedule a special meeting of the council to, it's, it's, it's not correct here. It's not to discuss affordable, tenable housing. It is to to, it's on whether to take a there needs to be at the town president, at the council president's request, there he would like to schedule a special meeting to decide whether you want to take a position on Thrive 2050. So what, Mr. President, when, what are you thinking? When, when would you like this to be?
So I was thinking in the evening next week, five to seven time slot. I don't know if Monday works for folks or.
Well, Monday is a holiday. So.
All right. So Tuesday, October 12th, five to six.
I, I can't do Tuesday.
Okay. Wednesday, October 13th.
I can do that one.
How about everybody else?
Is everybody available?
I'm only sort of, oh, five to seven. Oh, yeah.
Five to six.
It's just be one hour. We're just doing one topic. It's five to six, but later.
Okay. So that's what it is. Five to six.
Five to six, Wednesday, 13th.
The final decision is remember that you, you have committed to have a special meeting on the ARPA funds. And it is suggested that we do it the week that Matt comes back, which is the week of the 25th of October. So I think we have, is the work session? No, that's not it.
It's on the 18th.
On the 18th. Yeah, the work session. So, so what about on the, would you like to have the, the hearing on the ARPA funds on the 25th, the 26th?
Monday, the 25th? Monday seems to generally be good time slots for folks.
And what time would you like it?
Um, Matt Trolender, did you think we should give ourselves two hours for this to really go through it all? Or is it going to be much shorter?
Um, well, uh, I guess is the idea behind it to kind of go over the, the federal guidance and get sort of a prep on it and talk about.
Councilor Gore, what's your, how did you want this to present?
I, I want everybody to know what is available for us to do with the money and the constraints on that. So for example, although Matt has said that all of the money we could potentially be used for anything in our budget, we don't know that yet and we won't know it until quite late in the process, basically. Because it's the way the formulas work. So there are contingencies that need to be explained to everybody like that. And.
So, you know. So is it the council's pleasure that this be sort of a tutorial on ARPA? Or is, or would you like it to be a public hearing included so that residents could ask questions?
I think residents should be able to ask questions too. So I think it should be open to residents. Yeah.
And, and who are we going to have presenting? Matt or, or you or?
Uh, Phil Young should be part of it too. He's.
I just had a thought that and Ron, maybe you're a little familiar with, is it, is it Hagerty that is the firm that MML has retained to offer statewide guidance and be sort of a resource to local municipalities?
Yes. Yeah. They've been hired by the state.
So I, I don't know. I, maybe it's worth reaching out to them to see if they would be willing to to, to make themselves available to answer some questions for us. I don't know the extent of their arrangement with MML, if they are making themselves available to individual municipalities or not, though.
Well, I think what we're going to need to do is let Matt go and enjoy him. Well, I think what we're going to need to do is let Matt go and enjoy himself. And we will figure this out and plan to have it. Does, is October 25th work for everybody?
It does, it does work, but quick question, when is Matt? When are you back, Matt?
Yeah, my, my only concern about October 25th is that I,
You won't have enough time to organize it.
I might have, you know, I, 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 I think I can speak on a surface level pretty confidently on it, but.
That Monday is not great for me. So we can look at it differently.
Any reason why, is there any reason why this can't be done in November?
And one, one more thought, Jeffrey, to your question, it would be good to make it a working session. We can make it open to the public, to the residents, but I think we need a sort of tutorial plus. We need to understand the issues and potentially get into options. And I think we could do it in one session. And if town residents are on, that would be okay.
We can delay it to November. We just should, should get moving pretty quickly after that.
Okay, you know what, rather than, why don't we talk about this at the work session?
That's a good idea.
All right, because I, I don't think it's fair. I think you all would like to have Matt there and involved and, and let's let him go. And it's not, it's not all that urgent. I think you can wait until November. So with that, I think, I think you, I think you all showed your legislative prowess tonight. I thought it was an excellent meeting. And is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second, thank you, everybody.
Good night. Thank you.
Bye, everyone.
Hi, Matt. Good luck.
Thank you.